Okay, I think we are ready. I will call the board meeting for the month of May to order. We have a... well, first, let's do the pledge allegiance. So if you are able to stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, we have some guests here this evening, and we're gonna start with our first of two spotlights on education. We have our fifth grade math masters. Where are we at? Fifth grade math masters. Okay, who's giving the big speeches?
Well, this is a... we took eleven kids to Hammond on April twenty-fifth to a math masters competition. Mrs. Hilt and Mrs. Curtis and these wonderful kids and a couple others. He's not here, so it's okay. Not everybody's here, but almost all of them. So, yeah, we trained for about twelve weeks, doing a lot of extra practices, eking out every half hour that we could to practice some extra math problems.
So the board said that they were interested in seeing some of the questions, and they were guaranteeing that they'd be able to solve them. So let's look at the first of two questions.
I wanna know what board member said that.
Let's get... there was some questions. I know there was some sample questions, I know it. Here we go. All right, an aisle in the grocery store has forty-five shelves. On each shelf, there were twelve loaves of bread. Wheat bread makes up thirty percent of all loaves, and one-third of the wheat bread is honey wheat bread. How many loaves of honey wheat bread are in the grocery store? Go. Fifty-four.
I knew it was Steve.
I have no idea what the right answer is.
Is that right?
Did he get to see it ahead of time?
Yeah, I did.
There's no way you could've popped that on.
Let's try Steve's drill.
Listen, this information was released two weeks ago, and I would've got it, yes.
I didn't... I didn't know the other one, though.
A rectangle?
Yeah.
Is there another one?
Forty-four, isn't it?
A large rectangle to the right is made up of three congruent rectangles by the perimeter of one of the three congruent rectangles. Benson's been working on this one for a month. Well, we had two special winners within the crowd. We wanna talk about that for a moment?
Yeah. Zedekai, this is Zedekai, and he placed second in the fact drill portion of the competition. And this is Blake, and he placed third out of seventy-seven students.
And he's a small player, too, apparently.
It's been about... it's probably been since my daughter Emma was in fifth grade, so fifteen years since we've had any student from Avery place in that competition at all. And so this is really attributed to these two kids. So, yeah, and the whole group, to be honest. They work together, but these two can really outperform everybody, so they did a nice job.
Do we have any hard, non-math questions for these kids? Because they'll get the math ones right right away.
Yeah.
How do you... how do you prepare? Is it just understanding concepts of math? Or do you actually get the questions ahead of time like I did?
Well, it's a time... it's a time test. So you get the papers flipped over.
Okay.
And then, when they start the time, you flip the paper over and you start it. So you get one piece of paper where you write down the actual answers, and then you get another piece of paper for just extra work if you need help.
So is it... is it how fast you get it done with the number of right answers?
No, how many answers?
It's just how many you get right?
You get five minutes for the solo and then fifteen for the group.
So there's eight tests. They took math tests almost all day, eight math tests. And three of them were individual tests, so they each had to take their own individual test and could not collaborate. The facts drill was also individualized. And then, three of the tests were group. So they were two teams, two teams of five, and then they could collaborate. So they also had to work on collaboration skills available to work together and under pressure, under the time situation, too. So what did you guys do? What were some of your tactics that you used to try to help in this group competition? Tell them, not me. Yeah, there we go.
Go ahead, you go.
Anyway.
So we split up into groups and then, like, we had... On some tests, we had a sheet in the middle that we wrote on. So we had, like, one person doing that, and then we had, since there was five, we had two people doing different problems as a team. And then we told the person, and each test, we'd switch around. It was the person writing down the answers.
Did you guys have fun? Did you have fun?
Yeah.
This was a fun day, wasn't it?
So what comes now? Like, is there another competition? Are you going on to another level?
Isn't there sixth grade?
There is no further competition, but there is math masters in sixth grade as well, and I imagine a lot of these kiddos will be in that.
Do we plan on moving on, guys, to sixth grade math masters? Good, you liked it, it was good?
Yeah.
Did you... when you worked in your group, did you ever come up with different answers and you had to fight it out? Like, who was right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's what you and Brooke were trying to do.
Can you use calculators?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Not for the fact backs.
Not for the fact backs, because that would kinda be a waste of time, too.
Because you gotta know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could you introduce who you are quick, and then we'll send you on your way unless you wanna stay for the meeting? So just say who you are, so we know who you are. Anybody.
Go ahead, please, sir.
I'm Violet.
I'm Carly.
You can say your last name. First and last.
Violet Denzel.
I'm Carly Johnson.
I'm Beckett Nerfler.
I'm Alice Lee.
I'm Mary Ritter.
I'm Zedekai Home.
I'm Blake Bow.
I'm Edith Creason.
I'm Lea Chrome.
Nice job, you guys.
Well, we know where to go if we get stuck on a math problem.
When it comes to budget time, we'll bring you back in, okay? You helped, John. Thanks, you guys, great job. I just like summer state. Dice.
We're curious about equalization.
Next level. Next level. My family's leaving. Okay, they were short-lived.
Okay, we have a second spotlight on education, innovative mini-grants. We put out applications in the fall each year, and typically, we award from the district office a mini-grant for each of the four buildings and for special ed. And we have some mini-grant presentations here. If you follow along up on the big board, our first presentation is titled "Four K Nature Playground." Kylie Black, Darlie Hughes, and Trish Myers.
Hi, Trish Myers.
I'm Darlie Hughes.
And Kylie comes here. But, um, we gave the kids some time to explore the new playground we got, so thank you for that. But we decided that they needed a little more on the playground, so we kinda came up with some ideas of what to add to the playground to help them really explore gross motor activities and some fine motor activities. So we planned to put some stumps on there. We've ordered some stepping stones and easels, so they can also practice some fine motor skills outside. And then a mud kitchen for our sandbox, if we get it. One... a quote that us in Four K Love is by Karen Harris, and it says that scientists have discovered that it takes approximately four hundred repetitions to create a new synapse in your brain, unless you do it in play, and then it only takes ten to twenty. So we feel this is very important for our kids, so that's why we did it.
The reason we chose the natural playground because it mimics the natural environments and it incorporates elements that you saw in the pictures, like logs, rocks, sand, and plants. They... it offers many benefits for children that includes increased physical activity, enhanced cognitive development, and it's a greater connection to outdoor play and nature. We wanted the playground, the natural elements of the playground to be an extension of our classroom and an environment where they can practice all the skills that we introduce inside of our classroom. And we would... there's a quote by Angela Hanscom that sums up what we want our children to experience on our new natural nature playground. The outdoors offers limitless potential to young children. It becomes a place where they can go to relax their mind, to be inspired, and to deep dive into the world of imagination. It's a place where they can design, create, and explore. The possibilities are endless. So we thank you for offering us the grant and giving us the grant so we could offer some of these opportunities to our kids.
Well, we thank you for that work. The amount of screen time that our kids have, it's always good to get back to nature and do those things. And when we get ready to take those trees down, then we think we should have them go ahead and just consult with the Four K team and tell them they should cut them. That's really, really cool. A good word for all of us to live by there, to get back to nature and make sure you play, because those would be a form good habits, so. Very nice, very nice.
Thank you. Our second mini-grant presentation was the masked reader. We have masked readers over here. Nice. They're not fully masked, but...
Not fully masked.
This was brought to us by our title team at the elementary school of Carrie Shu and Lynette Wentz, and it was a huge hit when we did it back in the fall, early winter. I don't remember exactly.
Winter.
Winter, yes. Go ahead.
So my name is Carrie Shu. I am a Title I teacher at the elementary and also the district reading specialist. And I think teaching kids to read is serious business. And also, I'm from Adoka, which maybe you don't know is the Halloween capital of the world. So when given the opportunity to put on a costume, that's an easy yes.
Well, I'm Lynette Wentz, and I'm really her sidekick in this department.
Handler, probably.
But I know that when this opportunity came about, Carrie had the idea almost immediately, bringing it to the table among our K... well, K... pre-K three representatives on our reading language arts or special ed.
Our school has done Family Reading Night for thirty-one years in a row, which is pretty exciting. Every year, we have a different theme. For at least as long as I've worked here, which is seventeen years, we've always had a different theme. Sometimes it's connected to a storybook or a particular author. Sometimes it is a challenge of some sorts, like, let's take a reading road trip, and then we drive the little Jeep around the school and track our minutes as miles. Every year, it evolves a little bit. And this year, we decided to parody the masked singer, which you maybe have seen on TV. So we were the masked readers. And a big thank you to our committee, who were voluntold that we won a mini-grant, so you're gonna put on a costume and read a storybook to a group of children and their families, their loved ones. And then we had a big reveal at the end of the night. So they had a program which gave them clues as to who the volunteers were. Of course, their identities were concealed in costume. We had inflatable costumes. We had very realistic-looking masks. Lynette was a German shepherd. And so we had kind of a traditional storytime, followed by free books. Every child was able to select a free book from Scholastic. We had lots of fiction and nonfiction books for them to choose from, and then also their own mask to take home. So we encourage them that if you had fun tonight at school, you should go home with your new book and your mask and be a masked reader yourself. So thank you for your part in that, and thank you to our committee, and thank you to Power Up. Power Up supplied healthy snacks for all of our families. And it was a hit, so much so that we are getting the tote out again and maybe cooking something up for the track and field day if you've ever gone to a Rivers or Tim's game and seen those characters race across the field. We might, uh, might have something in store for you on Thursday.
I can't wait.
Which costume did the principal wear?
Oh, come on, now.
Which one's he going to wear?
No, you'll have to come and find out. So it was a great night, and thank you for our partnership for that.
Failed it, failed it. How many costumes do you have?
I think we've had five, six costumes. We used four for the event, so we're gonna use some new ones for the track and field day. We had over a hundred and thirty people in attendance, so we felt like we had a great turnout. You never know in the winter who's gonna show up and what the weather will be like, but it all went very well. So we're very pleased. Next year, we need a new idea, so if you've got one, shoot it our way.
Come on, people. You guys have been doing this for how many years? And I'm just telling you right now, this never ceases to amaze me how creative you people are. You can do that for us. It's all you. This is very cool, very cool. I like... I like the way they're... Right after the fifth grader... sorry, the fifth graders upstate.
Okay, our next mini-grant presentation, brought to you from the intermediate schools.
We have these lovely four fifth graders to, you know... We'll give credit to Mrs. Yaski. This was sort of her brainchild that just piggybacked on top of it and helped out with a lot of it. So we've been working together with these fifth graders, and they actually wrote the grant themselves with just a little assistance from us. So we're gonna let them take the reins. Go ahead, you can explain.
Protect our monarchs and our pollinators. The importance of pollinator gardens and monarchs and why they make a difference. By Edith Creason, Lea Whitcock, Alice Lee, and Beckett Nerfler. Our goal is to educate others about the decline of the monarch butterfly population, create a model pollinator garden, and educate our community about ways we can make a difference. One, educate others about monarch population decline. Two, create a model pollinator garden. Three, educate our community. Students create a bulletin board and fact sheets to display in our school and present it to the school board. They will also have an article published in the district newsletter. A pollinator garden is an important place for pollinators to come, and it creates a beautiful, healthy environment. But why is this important? What makes a pollinator garden such a wonderful place? Why are pollinators considered necessary to us in nature? Monarch butterflies. Last year, we had an odd winter, which made it so that lots of bad bugs came that harmed our monarchs. So now they are only endangered, but we can save them. Mrs. Yaski and her family collect monarch eggs and raise one hundred to two hundred monarchs each year. The most they released was two hundred three monarchs in one summer. Mrs. Curtis raises monarchs as well and saves between twenty-five to one hundred monarchs every summer. Think about how many monarchs they saved. Monarch butterflies aren't just beautiful. They help our planet stay healthy. But in order to have a healthy planet, we have to have healthy monarchs. Pollination is so important. It creates a strong, healthy ecosystem full of life. Without a healthy ecosystem, our world would increase in pollution and global warming. That's where monarchs come in. A monarch's favorite flowers. Some of the monarch butterfly's favorite flowers are milkweed, purple comb flower, sweet jo pie weed, goldenrod, alclipius de rosa, maximilian sunflower, and zinnia. Remember, these are just some of the very many flowers, and there are a lot more. It is important to have these flowers because monarchs need nectar to survive. Also, the reason monarchs prefer certain flowers over others is because of the nectar and the colors. Beastly tacniflies. Tacniflies are monarch predators. When the monarchs are young caterpillars, tacniflies come and lay their eggs inside the caterpillar's body. When they grow up, the caterpillar or the chrysalis turns the color black and black. Monarchs journey to the south and back. In the wintertime, monarch butterflies need to go south to California, Mexico, and Florida because they cannot live in the cold winters we have here. It takes them about two months to fly to Mexico because they have to fly one thousand nine hundred and two miles to get there from Wisconsin. That's a long way to go. Hearts of a butterfly and a flower. For the butterfly, there's a forewing, hindwing, antenna, head, eyes, abdomen, and a thorax. For the flower, there's a stigma, anther, filament, style, petals, a cypicle, sepals, and a stalk. How to create a pollinator-friendly garden. When you create a pollinator-friendly garden, you need to have food. Monarch caterpillars have milkweed leaves. When they're adult butterflies, they feed on nectar from milkweed buds. To create a pollinator-friendly garden, you have to have lots of flowers, not just any flowers. You have to make sure that there is no invasive plants in your garden. You also have to make sure that flowers in your garden have not been treated with pesticides, insecticides, or neonicotinoids. You have to be willing to water your plants at least and interwater every week. But most importantly, you have to enjoy the presence of your new garden. Pollination through the seasons. During the spring, pollinators need early blooming plants to provide food after hibernation or northern migrations. Bold spring of frumioles and spring blooming fruit trees are visited during this time. Summer is the best time for flowers to bloom. The long days of summer provide pollinators the maximum time to forage for nectar. During the fall, late blooming plants provide many pollinators with needed fuel before hibernation and for the southern migrations of pollinators like monarchs and hummingbirds. Throughout the winter, even when there appears to be little to no activity, pollinators are in the garden. Leave decaying plants alone. They may be sheltering pollinating insects as they overwinter. What is pollination and why is it so important? Pollination is when pollen grains, which is part of a plant or flower and organism, is transferred from one plant to another by a pollinator. The pollen cells combine and create seeds for more flowers and plants. We need our pollinators because they pollinate most, if not all, our food, which explains why without pollination, almost all of our food would disappear. Did you know that one in three mouthfuls of food and drinks that we consume is dependent on the work of pollinators? Pollinators and pollination are so important, we wouldn't be able to live without them. So that is why it is important to help provide land for our pollinators. Did you know that pollinator-friendly gardens are great for education? Pollinator gardens are great for education because they can help children learn by teaching them to help pollinators, wanting to help them survive. I think having a pollinator garden would be great for learning at our school, especially for science and the plant and animal sciences. It would also be a great way for kids to learn about the life cycle of monarchs and how to help them. We hope you learned a lot about monarch butterflies and are willing to help these wonderful butterflies as they increase in numbers. They are such an important part of our life. Thanks for listening to our presentation. You can make a difference.
We thank you for the grant. We've got the boxes, they're gonna be ready. I guess we're gonna be out kinda behind the dumpsters towards where you enter the forest. And we've got the plants. We're ready to plant. We're gonna plant later this week, so once we are pretty sure there's no frost coming this...
Do it tomorrow.
Probably Thursday, Friday.
Who's all going to be planting the pollinator gardens?
Well, we... these... honestly, they put together this presentation. We didn't do... we just edited a little bit of it, but we didn't have to do much because they're amazing kids, these kids are. So... and they did most of the grant writing as well, so we just guided them through that process. So we figured they probably deserve the right to be able to help plant the garden, too. Lucky for us, a nice gentleman in our community named Mr. Curtis is going to come. Put together the garden boxes with the kids and...
He was volatile.
Also volatile.
Coming and helping us with some things like that. So he's gonna come either Wednesday or Friday, depending on what the weather looks like, so, yeah.
They are... they raised, raised beds, is that? Do you need dirt? Because I know where you can get some of it.
Oh, well, we think we have enough. We... part of the grant money helped us buy the beds and the dirt and the plants.
Well, if you run out, give my wife a call.
Okay.
Don't call me.
She could trail her bed if I'm wet.
Okay, thanks, thank you for that.
Now, you know, we just finished up with graduation yesterday. And I think of all the graduation parties going on and all of those kids that wore their nice medals and all of the things crossing the stage. And I guarantee that this video is gonna be played on a loop at you guys' graduation in seven short years. Very cool.
There'll be some of your younger children making the moms cry.
I know. Outstanding leaders that I expect to see more great days through.
The bar's been set high for bucket golf.
Better than one of your standards. Those aren't as cute as those little guys. Just not even close.
All right, so this year... last year, we got a mini-grant through a modified volleyball game called Nitro Ball. This year, we wanted to add a new unit, which would be golf. And so this is a modified version of golf called Bucket Golf. Bucket Golf is like a backyard-style game where, I guess, I can get into the other portions of this. But essentially, we wanna make sure it tied to some standards. Some new ones that we could implement at our district would be simple striking and implement from a stationary object. And then the second one would be more what we see in the high school. But I think with the middle school version, we can actually use getting students outside for individual performance and outdoor activity on the second one there. But, yeah. Simple way to play this game... If you wouldn't even go to the next picture, then people might get an understanding. Simple ways to play this game is, like I said, it's an outside, outdoor game. But those buckets are essentially the holes. The cones are the tee boxes, and the ball is just a wiffle ball, harder plastic. And then the club is a modified, oversized head. But the shaft, the grip, is all standard size if you were to go golfing with your actual clubs. But you tee off from the tees. We let the students on our first day pick our location where they would like to go from. So they essentially built our course the first day we went out. We went out on the turf. It was a little cold out, so we wanted to make sure we were hitting off a predictable ground instead of if you got out onto the grass and then we had a frost, you'd snap a club. We did, however, find out that a student was... made it possible to snap a club on the turf. But the company we worked with...
Is there turf still intact?
Oh, yeah. The turf... I'm not worried about the turf, I'm worried about the clubs.
What could go wrong with clubs in middle school students?
But we... the company that worked with us, they even sent us a complimentary club to replace it, so it was really nice. But you tee off, and we let the kids choose. Like, if they wanna go to bucket one, just make sure no other groups are heading that way. And you hit. We teach them etiquette. The farthest back hits next, so that we're never hitting into people. If you do hit into someone, they already know the saying "four", so they watch out for one another. Essentially, what we're trying to do is make sure on hole twelve in a couple of years, they are not in Tom's backyard.
I aim for Tom's backyard.
Straight to y'all.
Just have a good draw.
But, yeah, so we were able to purchase all this equipment. And if all goes according to plan, if there's another opening for next year at the middle school, we would even be interested in doing this again. I don't know the protocol of doing this, but the clubs are very expensive, at thirty-five dollars a piece.
We barely have enough right now. Some kids have to share. It's expensive.
How many do you have?
We have twenty-six. We have twenty-four right-handed clubs and then two lefties. Our largest class had four lefties, so they just had to partner together. When Larry and I went out, like, we would challenge some kids. Like, we challenged Dan or we challenged Cole... or, I'm sorry, Ryder. We've been going out there, and it's fun to share a club because we teach students the importance of communicating while you're on the course. And if you are frustrated, how to maybe even talk through when you're playing good golf and how it feels and simple stuff. So I'm not sure if the golf is the main thing as much as it is just the socializing and the community around it because we have a great golf course in town. I know a lot of us here probably go there regularly. And it'd just be nice to make sure that we have members in our community staying here for a long time.
How many more clubs do you need?
Well...
A dozen, probably.
Yeah, I would say maybe...
We're pretty great on holes and all that kind of stuff. And the balls don't last forever, so another round of those would be good. They're not exactly a wiffle ball, they're a little bit harder, I believe. So we try not to use them for other sports. Like, pickleball looks similar, but it bounces differently. There should be one more. I think there's a picture of the kids.[1746.84] There should be one more, I think there's a picture of the kids and I think that one's actually a video. I thought the cool part was hearing kids say things like, I've never held a golf club before. I mean, it's pretty hard to introduce something new to kids in eighth grade, they've kinda done it all at some point, but a lot of them have never done it and I hear a lot of the same stuff I hear on the golf course when I go, frustration, excitement, trying to figure out why that didn't go where they wanted to go, so. It was neat, and it was, we have some kids that do golf a lot, it was kinda fun for them to almost show off, or we'd send kids that haven't golfed before, like, your buddy will teach you, and they would try to show them how to do it, and it was kinda neat for them, they really enjoyed it. And then the, uh, next time we went, we went behind the middle school and did it on grass. So kids could see the difference between predictable surface and now the grass isn't so predictable. And we would do things like put the hole, maybe over the soccer goal, so we turned it kind of into a miniature golf, real golf, all kinda rolled into one. And so the hope is every time the kids kinda designed a new course slightly, at least a little bit, and they learn things about like, oh, if we put this one far in their way, it has to be a higher par and all that kinda stuff. And then we did a little bit, but that'll be our next week now, we did some alternate shot stuff, some scramble shots, just teaching them different golf games they could potentially play. So the kids really enjoyed it and it was neat to hear them like, you know, two or three days later, go, are we golfing again, or are we golfing? Anytime it's warm, I ask, are we golfing today? So, so they were into it. How far does it go? Uh, good shots, twenty-five to thirty yards if you really get into it, so.
And Larry even found on, uh, a video of the long drive competition golfers, they were playing this and the farthest they could get it was sixty yards.
Yeah.
And I think I maybe got it to thirty or forty yards, it's very hard, if you have good backwind, it's fun. I think even playing with the wind or side wind makes your shots even more unpredictable and a little challenging, so.
And because so many kids had never done it, it was easy for them in two or three days to see improvement. So they could say things like, hey, I'm getting better, like, well, yeah, you only had one way to go. So it was fun for them.
Can I ask one question, was it a Dirkler or a DM Rosio that broke the club?
I'm just playing the super C on that one. I want a herb ball if it was mine.
I would not have if it was mine.
Probably with great excitement.
Yeah, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, it was fun.
Well, Bonnie puts a good news.
Yes, well, we got one more.
No pressure, yeah, no pressure, geez, I love Cape Codians practice with those guys probably.
Tracy, you just let me know where you want me to stop, right here?
Perfect.
Perfect, alright. I was told to keep this short here, but I'm a history teacher currently, so, you know, we have tendencies of getting long-winded, so I'll, I'll do my best here, but I'm Dylan Johnson for some of you who may not know, uh, current social studies teacher. Um, and I received a grant here, uh, to be, uh, doing like a Native American, uh, tour for, um, our tenth grade US history students. And so our standard that we were really focusing on here was Act Thirty-One, um, if we wanna go to the next slide here. I kinda wanna take a two-pronged approach here, wanted to go to Fort Snelling, get a diverse, uh, different exposure to different things here locally, uh, in US history. But also, uh, kinda more expansive as we talk more about Native American histories. Uh, so looking back at, at this day here, uh, we had just, it was perfect, it was like seventy-five degrees, no wind, kids were loving this day, but we learned about a number of different things, what life was like back in the eighteen hundreds, um, what the economy was like, how cur, different currencies was used, but also more so about Native American history. Uh, we learned about the Three Sisters crops, how Native Americans figured out how to, you know, have corn, squash and beans planted together. So that, you know, you have nitrogen released back in the soil, it was, it was really great, the kids had a really fun time there. And I wanted to have a little bit more of a unique experience and on the next slide, we kinda go there. Excuse me, I battled, battled my allergies here last week. Um, but I wanted to, uh, kinda show some local history here, uh, on Native American history, and so where we're at here is Berkamowes Park in Hudson, Wisconsin. So on our way back from Fort Snelling, we stopped and got lunch and we had lunch at, um, really old Native American burial grounds. Uh, so way back like two thousand years ago, the Mississippi mounders were all along the Mississippi at St. Croix River Valley area. And this was a religious temple that we had learned about way back at the start of the semester when we studied the city of Cahokia that is currently in St. Louis, Missouri, which actually at the time was the largest city in the world, so. That's one thing that we try to focus a lot, um, in US history, uh, when we talk about our First Nations. You know, usually when we talk about First Nations, many people think about, uh, you know, the trade of tears, a lot of sorrow and type stuff, but we also wanna celebrate a lot of successes that Native Americans had as well, and so we see that with the city of Cahokia and their advancement there, the Three Sisters crops. And I suppose to say Ira Hayes up there, not just Ira, but Johnny Cash has a wonderful song of Ira Hayes. He was one of the, uh, brave young men, uh, who, uh, stormed, uh, Iwo Jima Hill and raised up the flag. Uh, and he was a Native American, and so we were able to, uh, learn about him here, but we wanted to have the transgression throughout our history. And this was just a great way to put a kind of capstone project with it, and so kids had a great time, really appreciated that great, so thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the time of year where we reorganize the board, we had a school board election in April, we did the swearing in of new board members, April Zima and Larry Wycheck here in the month of, uh, April, and now we need to reorganize and that we have two new faces in the room. So the first order of business is to appoint a teller, do I have a motion to appoint a teller?
You just tell it.
We're gonna tell ya, you're the teller. Becky Schmidt, you are the teller, okay. Do I have a motion for the position of president on the School District of Amory Board of Education? I'll make a motion for Shar Glenna. Do we have any other motions?
Just nomination, just, just a nomination.
Just a nomination, do we have any other nominations, sorry?
It's okay.
I have to say it three times, so I'll say it two more times, do we have any other nominations? Do I have any other nominations, hearing done, we will?
I would move to close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Shar Glenna for president of our school board.
Okay, I'm gonna pass the baton over to the.
I will take a vote.
I will take a vote. I'm not the fake guy, clearly.
Is there, if you have to ask for a second for that?
Okay, a second, second, thank you, Larry. Uh, now we need to do a vote for Shar as president, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Hearing four to zero, you are, the motion carries and you are president.
Thank you, alright.
Now I'll turn it over to you, cause you know what you're doing.
Wow, over ten anyway.
Yeah, you do.
Alright, um, with that, thank you very much for, uh, instilling confidence for another year to move forward with this position. And I'd like to welcome two new members to the board and we'll proceed going forward now with the rest of the elections. Is there a nomination for vice president?
I nominate Steve Ossero.
No, I'll shut down that.
You don't have to, thank you, Valerie. Are there any other nominations for vice president? Any other nominations for vice president? Any other nominations for vice president?
I would move to close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Steve Ossero for vice president of our school board.
Is there a second? Larry, did you second that?
I'll second.
Alright, it's been properly moved and seconded to close nominations for vice president. And if, uh, cast unanimous ballot for Steve Ossero to be vice president. This is, uh, does not require, is not amendable, is not required discussion, has been properly seconded. All of those in favor of closing nominations and casting a unanimous ballot for Steve Ossero to be vice president, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed, Steve, you are, uh, nomination's passed, Steve, you are now the vice president again. Moving on to clerk, are there nominations from the floor for a new clerk, even, this is weird, since Dale was a clerk for twenty-one years.
So can, uh, since, since Dale always did this, can we talk about what was the role of the clerk?
I, I, I think the, one of the big ones that is helpful from a district office perspective for a clerk is somebody who's got somewhat flexible, uh, availability, just simply because the vast majority of the things that we have to submit for state record, for bank record, that sort of thing, does have to be signed off on by the, the, uh, by the clerk. Um, but really, I mean, I, I guess that's primarily, but the big ones are gonna be the, the annual, uh, school board elections. And then ultimately our, uh, PI four oh one or our tax levy certification after the October board meeting are probably the two bigger head activities of the clerk every year.
Contributing to the minutes and improving meeting minutes.
Keeping both the closed session, you know, Becky is the one that kinda keeps our open session along with video, uh, record, but the closed session minutes is important, so. Is there a nomination from the floor?
I would nominate Gwen Gato.
Sounds good, is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Are there any other nominations for clerk? Would anybody make a motion to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Gwen for clerk?
I will make the motion that we close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Gwen Gato, question?
Is there a second?
I second, thank you, April.
All of those in favor of, uh, closing nominations, casting unanimous ballot for Gwen Gato for clerk, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed, nominations, uh, office goes to Gwen for clerk, a new clerk after twenty-one years. Big shoes to fill, Gwen, big shoes.
Just remember a pat.
At all times.
Honestly, if you don't have one, Becky's got one. Alright, and then the next office of treasurer, is there a nomination from the floor for treasurer?
And what is the, what does the treasurer do in our case?
So I, I, there's, you know, uh, there's a lot of things that the treasurer can do. Um, you know, the, the big one is going to be, um, reading the annual treasurer statement during the annual meeting. Um, and really I think from there it kinda goes down to whatever the individual, how deep the individual actually wants to get in the world of school finance as far as, um, what, uh, input into the annual meeting, um, what topics we discuss, that sort of thing. Uh, but really, I mean, there's not a lot of daily things, it's quite a few signatures a couple of times a year and, um, some just frank conversation about state budgeting, but that's probably primarily what it is. Do you have anything to add? Yeah.
Yep, uh, any kind of borrowing, have to sign off on borrowing, those kinda things, um, if we needed to come in and.
Yeah, I mean, all the, the president, the clerk and the treasurer by board policy, um, will, will have to capture signatures prior to departure today. Um, so that we can get updated signatures across all of the, the checks, both payroll and, um, and PBD and CCD payments.
I would nominate Larry Wycheck, his background in business, if there would be some interest there for you. If you'd be willing to accept that.
Yes.
Okay, are there any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? Do I have anybody that's willing to close nominations, make a motion to cast close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Larry for treasurer?
I'll make that motion.
Alright, April, is there a second?
Second.
Gwen, thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded to close nominations for treasurer and to cast unanimous ballot for Larry as treasurer. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Congratulations, Larry, unanimous new treasurer. And that leaves, we don't even have to, April, you are now the director.
Thank you.
We didn't have to bow it, you just, we just tell you now. You are the director, which is also responsible for going to all of the CISA meetings, being responsible for the. She's like, what, I didn't sign up for that. Alright, congratulations, everybody, and welcome on to a new board for twenty-five, twenty-six. And now moving on to the designation of district depositories. Nope, we have meeting schedule, we're meeting schedule.
We're meeting schedules, same as it's been in the past, just pushing those dates forward, here is what we've done for years.
Is there a motion to approve the schedule as presented, does anybody have any conflicts or anything?
I, I had conflicts in, in July and January, the, and I'm willing to remotely attend if, if need be. So we don't need to move anything on my account, I just wanted to make that aware.
There are a couple of months where in the past we've been going to the fourth Monday, but after discussion, I don't think there's any longer reason to do that, at one time there was a reason. So you will see, I think primarily the third Monday, except, um, in March because of spring break. I think we're actually the second Monday there, so a little earlier in the month.
We had discussed for June, we historically did the fourth Monday, just in case there was leftover funds, but the reality is with the way that state budgeting is and everything, there's no longer a mile-long wish list that we're looking to fulfill and need more for.
I may have a conflict in February, but I could join remotely if that's an option.
It has been an option.
You can also, you, you can miss one or two if, if you have to, too, I mean, it, it does happen, I think that'd be the only one.
Okay. Alright, and nobody else sees anything glaring, like, we don't have anything scheduled or anybody's, like, six vacations or anything that we have coming up? Alright. Is there a motion? Uh, just the month of July, is that your vacation?
Yeah, definitely.
Alright, yeah, well, I'm gonna make you zoom in.
Yeah, that's fine.
From camping, you could tell me that you have no service.
Yeah, I'll be in the parking lot at Piggly Wiggly.
Alright, uh, do I have a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, Amory Board of Education regular meeting dates?
I'll make that motion.
Steve, is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Amory Board of Education regular meeting dates, is there any further discussion? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor of approving the meeting dates, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed, the meeting schedule is approved as presented.
Can I ask a question that doesn't, maybe relates to this, but doesn't relate to?
No.
When the.
Yeah, go ahead.
When we, when we figure out who's doing board vouchers, um, how you go about that, so that we know, you know, about the conflicts and all of that.
Yeah, I usually just put something together, like Gwen did it tonight, so now she's off the hook for a while, and I'll just go down the list, I'll probably work with Shar to figure out how you wanna mentor Larry and April on that. So I'll put together a schedule, send it out to you all, and you could just let me know if anything doesn't work for you, and we'll make some adjustments.
Perfect.
Yeah, Becky schedules that up for us.
It just happens, I just remember it happening, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, Becky makes everything.
But now I know a few months I can avoid for like, for you and Larry, so I'll, I'll do my best to put, put something together you can respond to.
And I wrote those down too, so we can do that. Okay, moving on to the designation of district depositories. John?
Well, they're this, this generally the same as in the past, yeah, not sure if there's anything you need to.
Yeah, there, there's, there's no change of the, this year, um, there's really, there's, there's three that are gonna be targeted throughout the course of the next calendar year. Primarily Bremer Bank being acquired by Old National Bank, um, so we're still, I'm still trying to figure out what that looks like and what interaction the board's gonna have to have when that actually happens.
It's supposed to happen in October.
It is, so, as of right now, we're gonna continue pressing forward with Bremer, um, but, you know, the big question that'll be on the docket is, are they a local bank? Um, and so that'll be something that we'll have to kind of discuss and, and contemplate. Um, Wisconsin Credit Union will fall off July first, believe it or not, we have a seven-dollar outstanding balance that we can't pay in this fiscal year, we have to pay it in next fiscal year for SEC guidelines, uh, and then the Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative, which is where we've hosted all of our, um, investments for the referendum proceeds. Uh, that'll also fall off here come, at the summer timeline, uh, but other than that, there is no changes as of this moment.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the, uh, official depositories for twenty-five, twenty-six?
Do we have to change, do we have to revisit this when the name changes?
I don't believe so, I think we just have to revisit this once a year.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
Okay, and I would make a motion, we accept it as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to, uh, accept the official depositories as presented for the School District of Amory for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed, uh, the school depositories are approved as presented. And then, um, authorization for use, um, of well-brally for legal services again, um, I know we talked a little bit about last year uh, looking at other options as far as legal services go. Uh, I think what we found is that well-brally services specializes in school district business, um, they've been good to work with. Um, we know what our costs are there, we know, um, they're very familiar with the business of the school district, so. Is there any motion to approve, um, the use of well-brally for legal services again this year?
I would make that motion that we continue to use well-brally.
Steve, is there a second?
Second.
April? It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the use of well-brally for legal services for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, is there any further discussion?
I would have a question. Is, is the rate fixed or is it variable?
It's variable based on the work that's completed and, um, we're invoiced sporadically, usually it's every two, three months. And, um, we work primar- primarily with Steve Weld and Spence Strass, though they do have all sorts of folks that work all sorts of other areas of law. But Steve Weld typically works the personnel, I am the HR, and, um, Spence Strass works all of the legalities surrounding any new legislation that's been passed, open records requests, any kind of work that's happening in Madison that's hot off the press, he works that angle. And, um, they've, they've been awesome to work with and we've been with him for quite some time.
Are they out of Old Clare?
They are out of Old Clare, but they have other offices beyond that.
Any other further discussion?
Well, I think you said that they work with the majority of the districts in the area.
They do, they do work with the majority of the districts in this part of the state.
So they're gonna have their finger on.
They will.
What is happening in the area.
If I call them about something that's just been passed or something that's just been introduced, I'm typically one of many people that have called them. The answer is very similar, there, it's not new news, because we're all asking the same questions. So it's very helpful to have someone that we have a very strong working relationship with. There's a sense of trust there. I know I can call them, I'll get a straight answer and I'll get very good help.
I think those of us who've been on the board for some time now have found their guidance to be helpful and professional, so. Whatever that's worth to the rest of the board. Is there any further discussion on approving Weld Riley for legal services? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of using Weld Riley for legal services for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed, we'll use Weld Riley for legal services. Next would be the authorization for use of independent hearing officers for expulsion hearings held in the, uh, year twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Hopefully there will be none, but in the event that there is some, we have to, um, appoint that. That is also usually been Weld, Weld Riley in the past that has come to provide those services.
So what are we, what is the action item here? Just the fact that we will use an independent one or that we will use Weld Riley?
That you're gonna use an independent hearing officer.
Yes.
Okay.
And the reason for the independent hearing officer, they're not there to represent the district, they're making sure that the district is there to follow all statutory requirements of an expulsion hearing, which there are many, having gone through a few. We haven't had many and that's a good thing, but the quickest and easiest way for an expulsion hearing to go wrong is to not follow the statutory particulars. So that person's there to make sure you have the guardrails on.
So the motion would be to use an independent hearing officer for expulsion, but not necessar- doesn't have to be locked into one rally, so. Is there a motion to, um, use an independent hearing officer for expulsion hearings?
I would move to use an independent hearing officer for expulsion hearings in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that school district will use an independent hearing officer for expulsion hearings held in twenty-five, twenty-six. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed, the school district will use an independent hearing officer for any expulsion hearings held in twenty-five, twenty-six. Next is the appointment of CISA eleven delegate. And it looks like we have an annual convention of school district board reps. Is that, um, included in that? Or is.
We've been doing that for years.
And that would be Monday, June second at seven p.m. Any volunteers?
Yeah, if anybody's interested in it. This meeting, if it's one that I'm thinking about, we, um, we meet with the other representatives and then they do some elections on who's gonna be involved in what.
Yes.
Throughout that year. Um, and then the big one is the, the state convention, which you're not obligated to go to, but you should go to if you can. And that falls right in that January timeframe that I'm not available. I went, I was able to go two years ago and I couldn't go last year, um, just because of that conflict. So if somebody is interested in, in being that representative and also keep in mind that that's the convention, even if you're not the delegate, if you're free and you wanna go, you can go. The big thing is gonna be just the, the local contact here with CISA eleven. And it is a budgeted, it has been and will continue to be a budgeted item for at least one board member, but with that budget line, it's enough for two, maybe even three, to be in attendance for the state convention. And it's probably, in my opinion, it's the most beneficial convention to actually go to. And they have a lot of first-time board member activities and tracks for you to kind of participate in, including a three-hour marathon session called School Finance One-on-One. It's great.
It was fun.
I just wanna point out there's actually two different delegates and we're only voting tonight on the CISA eleven delegate. We would vote on the WASB delegate at another time. In the past, we've done it at the same time, but it's so far in advance for someone to come into January, then we're just doing the CISA delegate today.
So this is just the local stuff, yeah. So is anyone interested in that?
Is this something odd for a new person to do?
Not at all.
I'll go.
Okay. Fantastic. April, would you volunteering to be a CISA eleven delegate? Are there any oppositions to April being the CISA eleven delegate? Do we have a motion to appoint April as the CISA eleven delegate?
I'll make a motion that we appoint April or nominate April for that position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion of appointing April as the CISA eleven delegate? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of April being the CISA eleven delegate, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. April, you are the CISA eleven delegate. Motion passed. Thank you for volunteering.
I can walk us through the next item, the board appointed committees. We have some replacements that were in need of vouchers. So the Building and Grounds Committee, we, um, uh, meet once a month and we have a lot to see over the course of the last year and a half. And we'll have a lot more to see because we have some big decisions on the horizon. Joel Beerken was the Building and Grounds rep along with Steve Ostrer, so it would be nice to have another board member. Not sure if there's any volunteer there.
I would volunteer.
Okay, that sounds great. The Community Ed Advisory Committee, um, Tracy's replacement as Director of Community Ed makes sense, that would be a logical fit for that person. And then Dale Johnson was the other person. So we would need someone to step in there.
I would do that one.
Okay. Curriculum Oversight, uh, Jessica's the point person on curriculum and instruction in the school district of Amory. They meet two, three, four times a year depending on, um, the curriculum order and at the end it's size. And we have some big tickets coming up with mathematics here. Uh, we would need a new person on the curriculum oversight committee.
I would be interested in that.
Okay. And jump in if you wanna disagree and say. Human Growth and Development Committee, I think the obligation is every two years.
Correct.
And we have met like last year, so we'd be up again next year. So we would need, um, a representative, not from the board, but another student representative, because the person that's on there is graduating. So we'll grab someone for that. Technology Committee, uh, we'll make the name changes, uh, with the, the new hires that would fill in there. There's no board change there. Outdoor Ed, we have a retiree there with Colleen, so we can grab another staff person there and I think that wraps it up.
Thanks for volunteering, everybody. Uh, is there a motion to accept the board-appointed committees?
I would move to accept the board-appointed advisory committees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on, uh, board-appointed advisory committees at this time?
The only question I have is, do we have to revisit anything when those other people are asked or appointed that we didn't talk about?
We can, if you're referring to like, for instance, Human Growth and Development.
Yeah, yeah.
We have, uh, over the course of the last two or three cycles, we've moved some people on the list and some people off based on availability.
Do we have to make a motion on it at that?
We have been in the past, I think this is more for who's gonna be the board person.
Yep, that's what I figured.
Because some folks have simply retired out of the profession and they no longer work in that area and so they're no longer available or interested.
Okay, so we're off to make sure that we know what committees we have. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of accepting the twenty-five, twenty-six board-appointed advisory committees as changed, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Larry, April, welcome aboard to your, your appointed committees. All right, that takes care of all the housekeeping business, except I do know that April has to leave at eight o'clock tonight with her first board meeting, she's got a conflict, she's heading down through the tornado alley to go to Arkansas for, for graduation, her family allegations, and so, uh, just wanted to let people know that April needs to get up and leave at eight o'clock. April, please feel free to do that and get on the road, be safe tonight while you're driving.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda items. Gwen, I believe that was you tonight.
Yes, uh, all questions were answered and so I would move to accept the, um, consent agenda items.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda items as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda items tonight, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed, consent agenda items are approved. Off to administrative reports. You got off easy last month, you're back on this month.
Gosh, you're up. There's not much going to advise me.
Not at all.
It's been the, you know, I went back to our last board meeting where we all ran from here to the Fine Arts Concert. It was a great night that night, fan choir, the art displays. We had state solo and ensemble contest down in McLaren. We had a buzzload full of singers and instrument players down at McLaren, it was a great day. Senior Awards Night, May seventh, senior class trip last Wednesday, gorgeous weather, eighty degrees. It was a great day, kids had a blast. I told all the parents we could've dropped them up at nine o'clock, said we'll be back at two o'clock and nothing wrong would've happened, except for there had been a lot of hungry kids. Just fabulous group. It was Friday, graduation practice, the senior walks on the day and we had a great graduation yesterday. So coming up, we've got, uh, spring playoffs are just around the corner for our sports team. And June fifth, we have our underclassmen show, kind of thing that we do in the morning.
And a shout out to Tracy Hendrickson for creating her tenth and final senior walk video. It was fantastic. If you haven't seen it, you should check it out. I watched it with my son at the end of the day when it, when it chipped out and when I threw both in tears, it was fantastic. And senior walk at the elementary is the next level, I can tell you that much. There is, it's like a wall of sound over there, so awesome.
That's pretty cool.
Tom, you're up.
All right, well, we just completed our Genius Hour Expo on May ninth. I don't know if anyone was able to be there in the board, but, uh, we had, uh, three hundred different presentations from the students and for the, you know, I know we presented on Genius Hour before, but the concept is to give the kids voice and choice, to present about their passion and present it and research it and then, um, basically use whatever strategies they want to also convey their information. There's a lot of voice and choice there. Aside everything from what adaptive technologies help students with disabilities, these are student-driven, um, to what strategies help prevent bullying, to, um, some research projects on, um, what types of foods help goats be more productive. So it was all kinds of things. We had a little, like, a regular old farm going back there, there was steers and cows and goats and pigs and everything on the back, a tractor, someone was showing off the tractor. And, and then we followed that up, uh, with our twenty-sixth annual eighth grade youth jam, which is sounded like an eighth grade graduation, um, activity for the kids. Memorial Day Parade's coming up, uh, this coming Monday and our sixth grade has now joined the seventh and eighth grade band. And they've been preparing the music and playing together for the last two or three weeks. And, uh, today we had to move lunches and for the next two weeks move lunches around so that they can get out and practice marching, because band typically is at the end of the day and there's too much traffic with parents coming in. So we then move and they march outside and they were practicing marching, getting ready for the Memorial Day Parade, um, this Monday. If you haven't been to the Memorial Day program, it's pretty neat and it's a really, really neat, uh, way to see our students interacting with a lot of seniors and, um, a lot of, uh, the old guard from the Legion, it's really fun. And then not just marching when they play when they march, but they also perform at the program. It's a really neat, um, neat deal. Uh, on, in May, on May thirtieth, our sixth grade will be attending the Pioneer Village field trip and this is part of the history program, so they get to see what, what school and life was like back in the pioneer days. Uh, last day of school, June fifth, uh, June fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, we have the same group, kids will be forming in the Clayton Parade and then the Clear Lake Parade. And summer school starts June sixteenth. But I wanna, really wanna do thank the band, Mrs. Sunderland, Mrs. Schroitz, Lundgren and all those parents that helped with the parades and that, they're invaluable. So that's what's going on at the middle school.
Thanks for being flexible for the traffic situation, too. I know it's not easy to have to move lunches and things, but.
We made it work for them.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. Each summer we offer summer workbooks to all of our elementary and intermediate school students, so every parent has the option to buy a workbook just to make sure that learning continues over the summer. Last year was the first time that we offered it to, um, our Title I students as a free resource. We use our community, or we use our angel funds to be able to pay for that, so we did offer that again. And so using our building angel funds at both the elementary and the intermediate school, we were able to purchase thirty-seven summer workbooks at the elementary and thirty-nine workbooks for students at the intermediate school. So just want you to know how those angel funds are being used and it's a fantastic resource for our kids to hopefully continue their learning throughout the summer. Leading literacy as an administrator, I've had two different opportunities this year to present to either principals or different administrators just to really share what's happening in Amory. So the first one was in October, I presented, um, at the principals' conference, um, in, on the east side of the state, just discussing literacy and how we are leading it here in the school district of Amory. And then this past month, CISA also invited me to talk at our principals' network meeting, um, just to guide on how we're accomplishing the task of Act Twenty, but then also how we're growing our readers. And so I'm very confident to say that we're doing really great things when they're asking us to reach out and ensure how we're handling all of it. Fifth grade max masters, so we already had students here talking to you about that, restorative discipline meeting. So myself, Mr. Mylan Archeck, our, uh, school counselor here, and then Mr. Graham is a school counselor at the elementary school. We did a full training on restorative discipline training and so that's moving from punitive consequences to more restorative discipline consequences. And so that focuses on increasing instructional time, but really, really working to build a sense of community with kids and that they have value. And so, um, you know, if, if there's harm done here at school, then we work hard to fix that harm here. So whether that's repairing the friendship, um, helping, you know, with the restorative practice here, um, that's something that we've been shifting to over the last couple of years. And so that was a full-day training and I feel like all three of us felt like it was very well worth our time to do that. Fifth grade Montessori concert, so we had that just several weeks ago, so that was our fifth grade band and our fifth grade Montessori together and it was fantastic. So thank you, kind of echoing off of what Tom says about our music department, it was fantastic. It's fun to hear our first beginning band students as they're starting their career with us. Mrs. Sunderland also had her fifth grade band sign up just a couple of weeks ago and so I'm happy to say our number has increased from the board report that you have in front of you. We have fifty-eight students that have signed up for band, so that is about sixty-five percent of our students, so over half sign up for our band program every year. In addition to that, more band, Mrs. Sunderland, Mrs. Curtis and all of our fifth grade students take an entire day and they go to Unity. And so they have different instructors that work with them, but then they also do a whole group festival at the end where they put all these bands together and they learn different songs throughout the day and then they play them at the end. And, um, it's always a really great opportunity for our kids to just hear different music and kind of be put on the spot in terms of learning something and working with other districts, um, our kids really, really enjoy it. Earth Day program, so each year we welcome the Amory Women's Club to come in and they read a book to each grade level, they do a craft and activity, they talk about the history and the importance of Earth. Earth Day program, so each year, we welcome the Amory Women's Club to come in, and they read a book to each grade level, they do a craft and activity, they talk about the history and the importance of Earth Day. Um, our students really enjoy it, so I always wanna thank the Amory Women's Club for that. It's an annual event that our teachers really look forward to. Um, and then finally, we had our kinship celebration last week, so all of the kinship students from the high school came over and, and had a party with our three through five students here. And I really wanna thank Pol County. I wanna thank our high school kids that show up every week. You see these big kids walk in our building and kids are our littles are so impressed and think they're just the coolest kids around, and so they show up every week. They give our kids a half hour of their time. I'll walk around the neighborhood and they're either playing a game or reading a story or just talking about their weekend, and that really means a lot. So, I wanna thank Amy Danielson as well, who organizes all of that for us. It's a fantastic support for our kids and, and we're really grateful to have our high school kids that we do. When we talk about upcoming events, we did not have our track and field day, uh, tomorrow. We won't be having it tomorrow, just with the predicted weather, so we've made the call that that will actually happen on May twenty-second. Uh, in addition, our Title I parent meeting will also happen on Thursday, May twenty-second. The weather looks a little bit better. Uh, May twenty-first, we have our school-wide Title I leadership team meeting, so in order to be, to remain a school-wide Title I program, we have to meet multiple, multiple times throughout the year with our leadership community committee. On that committee is, um, myself, our reading teachers, a couple of grade level teachers, and then actually some community members as well to be able to look over our Title I school plan. Um, we'll do that again in the fall, which then gets the stamp of approval, which will then be our, our plan moving forward next fall. So, this is just wrapping up, making sure that we met our goals for the year. In addition to many field trips that are actually happening over the next couple of weeks, our big, uh, kinda end of the, um, intermediate school era for our fifth graders is our May twenty-eighth and May twenty-ninth. Our fifth graders will go to Camp Wapo and they spend two full days. They're going through a series of, um, different stations, and our kids really, really like it. It's a good, it's a good experience, and it's a great thank you to them for giving us their last three years of being here. Thank you.
Okay, as you've already heard Jessica say, we were planned for tomorrow, but doing the track meet when it's forty-five and raining, it's probably not gonna be the best experience. We're moving around to Thursday. We've got a couple of upcoming field trips happening this week. The kindergarten, uh, kids are heading to Frozen. Uh, that's happening on Wednesday. We have the Montessori children's house that's heading to Fond du Rosa. Um, and we have Memorial Day off next week, Monday, and we have one of the bigger events at the elementary school, the hot dog, the last day of school, so I stand ready at the grill. I don't have Josh Gould's skills at the grill, but I'll do my best. You do, you do, he says. I worked the grill with Josh's assistant at the senior trip many a time. Will be able to make it happen.
Maybe Josh needs to come to the elementary school and help you out on that last day of school for the.
I could have nothing to be going on at the high school.
We already got rid of one class, so.
Maybe he could wear the lobster suit.
That'd be awesome. That'd be awesome.
And that's all I hear. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, um, just wanna do a special shout out to the special education teams in the building. This time of year, we start building the schedules, um, for students supported by NAP for next school year, um, and it is a major big puzzle. You shift one student and you start over. So, they're working really hard at that, so I would like to shout them out to appreciate their work. Um, one of my favorite parts of the, um, end of the school year is that I get to sit in graduation IAPs. Um, we have to have a final meeting for any students supported by NAP before they graduate. It's kind of a culmination of all the work they've done, and then we get their paperwork prepared for their next step. So, they're all set once they leave us, and it's really fun to get to celebrate, um, each one individually that way. And we actually had five students last month go to CISA eleven. They hold a, um, kind of, they called it the treasure hunt of this year for students supportive of NAP for deaf of heart of hearing. Um, and a lot of the work that this, teachers from CISA, um, do with these students is working on advocacy skills for themselves and learning how to take care of their hearing aids, learning how to ask for help, making sure their microphones are on. Um, so they have all the students in CISA eleven area, they invite them to CISA, and they do a great big day of celebration, and they call it treasure hunt to learn some skills. So, we got to have five go to that. And then finally, um, just this week, uh, this past week, I had the privilege of meeting with all the special education support staff for their end of the year evals. It's one of my favorite days that I get to spend with them. Um, again, we are very lucky. We have some amazing support staff in our, in our building, so it'll be fun to celebrate and come and look at their year.
Thanks, the administration team. Any questions for the administrators or any other reports?
Just, the only question I have is for Jessica.
Yeah.
Just because you mentioned Act Twenty and, and your talks and your, you know, going around. I know we talked about it months ago, but can you remind me, are we in Act Twenty? Are we in the process of preparing for Act Twenty?
We're, we're in. We are.
It really wasn't the process of preparing. All of Act Twenty, it was kind of here it is.
We've taken the entire year to navigate it. At first, the DPI said we're gonna initiate it in September. It wasn't ready to roll out. So, per Act Twenty, we've screened our students in winter and spring and up and coming. We have a promotional policy that we're gonna talk about with Act Twenty, so um, a lot of just the speaking I did on literacy was not only navigating it, Act Twenty, but then also how are we, how are we using that to really be champions of our kids, and I think we've done a really great job.
Thank you. I think that's a large part of your leadership on that and being welcome parents, so thanks, Josh. Alright, off to informational items. First reading of Clubhouse Childcare Compensation and Benefits Guide.
Well, over the course of the last couple of months, uh, as led by John McBride and Gretchen Walbert, we have been engaged with the Clubhouse childcare staff in regards to a handbook, which is all the wrong. Their circumstances are simply unique enough to where warrants needing a different document, it just is a different entity. So, what you see here is a first reading of the Clubhouse Childcare Compensation and Benefits Guide. And it mirrors much of the same language as the support staff and the certified staff, but again, some of the workplace scenarios just look different. Last Monday evening, we had a listening session with members of the Clubhouse staff. We had a half dozen or so folks there with April, Shara, myself, John, and Gretchen. And most of the conversation surrounded really, I don't wanna steal anyone's thunder, but really two topics, the, the notion of PLT, which is personal leave time, and then the, uh, how do you cover shifts, the switching of shifts, so to speak. And, um, that's the document you see. You're, you're not making a motion to approve, and it's done and over with and passed. You'll see it again next month. But if there's any questions that folks have, John, Gretchen, I, we all work the systems, so we can all help you. I'm not sure if you want to do any walk through the document. I think, I know you've all seen it. That's up to you. However, you, if you have questions, this would be a great time to ask points of clarity. Go ahead. Larry, go ahead.
Yeah, I would have a question with regard to work schedules. Uh, trading shifts with other staff members is not allowed. I, I'm just curious as to what the, the issues are, uh, there.
Well, so there's, there's, if, if I may, there's, there's kind of two, two separate, so the issue that the, uh, Clubhouse or childcare staff have raised is um, primarily as it revolves around ratios. And that's where a large percentage or a large portion of why we're doing this, uh, Clubhouse handbook separately is because a lot of their language has to revolve around the ratios. So, for instance, and I am not the ratio expert whatsoever, um, but for infants, six months to one year, the ratio, I believe, is one adult licensed teacher to six infants.
Okay.
But then when you get up to two-year-olds, now you're one for every eighteen. Uh, so Clubhouse's contention is if we can switch shifts, it can help to make it easier to hit those ratios so that we're not having to have, uh, Rachel, the, the director, step into classrooms, so that we can kind of meet some more of those licensing guidelines. Um, the issue has always been that as soon as you unrestricted allow people to switch shifts in lieu of PLT, they're just continually getting additional PLT days without calling it a PLT day. Um, so that's kind of one, is that a good, I mean, is that a fair way of saying that?
Well, you know, kind of, because they're still working.
Yes.
They're still making up for that day.
Correct.
However, it does then, being allowed to change so much, they can bank those PLT hours and then get paid out at the end of their career for them. And then it, it raises some ethical questions and, and really raises budgetary questions of if you were allowed to take a day off that you needed off, but yet you switched it with somebody else, you were still working the hours, but you're maintaining that PLT time, so it's getting a benefit that you, instead of using that benefit, you're just gaining them, and then that has real implications to the district after a while. Not that, we, we sat in this listening session, and it was April and I did, and it, this was the biggest source of contention with the employees. So, we asked them what that process looks like, and right now, there isn't a good process for that to happen. It's left to the employees themselves to kind of work out, which, as a board member, as administration, causes concern that when you leave it up to the employees that, well, I was supposed to switch with so-and-so, and then so-and-so didn't show up, and now you have ratio problems, and now what do we do? We don't have subs. Currently, that is like unchecked, and they can do that as many times as they wanted to. The, the proposal here is zero. Um, then they kind of floated out maybe four. Um, I had said in the meeting, maybe we meet in the, you know, we go with two. I wouldn't be as necessarily, as a board member, opposed to doing it twice in a year's time. I don't think it's gonna have that much of an implication to our, our budget at the end of the year's, uh, paying out. But it certainly can't be left unchecked, and it certainly needs to have a process in order to do that.
Right, and so we talked about instead of them just making the arrangements between themselves, that they should go to Rachel, the director, and then she could try to find a person that would be willing to swap with them in one of their two times that they were able to, because then it's really accounted for.
Okay. And the, and the other issue that we have with that is that we have leads there, so we have lead teachers versus just our regular, uh, employees. And so, you wouldn't wanna take a regular employee and put them in a position of a lead where skill sets are different. They're, they're being, they're leads for a reason. Um, so they would have to be kind of swapped within their same roles. So, regular teachers would swap with regular teachers, and then leads would be able to swap with leads, but being able to inner swap those, that becomes difficult.
And I, yeah, and I, I would just add one more thing, which is just simply, it can be a logistical nightmare. Because you have thirty-ish staff who are working approximately five to six different schedules. Some are ten-hour days, some are eight-hour days, some are six-hour days, some are three-hour days, some are an hour and a half a day. And so, you, you're trying to put those into all of these different pieces and who can cover what, while still maintaining overtime boundaries, while still maintaining ratios. It's just by the time if you were to let it go unchecked, we would find that Rachel, the director's job is just simply scheduling.
Yeah.
And that's not what the, the mission is here.
And, and the, and then we have the whole idea of ten-hour shifts versus eight-hour shifts versus five-and-a-half hour shifts, right? So, we have three different shifts down there too. So, if you're asking somebody to take, it's normally a five-and-a-half, but then taking a ten, then what does that look like as far as accruing PLT and all those things, because it's the value of a day? So, I would be opposed to, as a board member, I would be opposed to looking at something there to, that's not zero, but not unlimited either.
Does, 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 just trying to get your hands around that and control that also create a problem where you don't have the flexibility then?
Yeah, that's the dance I think you have here. We don't wanna create an inflexible system where we gain cover than kids that we need to cover. But right now, it's sort of wild, wild west where people are switching, and Rachel's simply finding out about it on the fly when everybody else is finding out about it. So, we've already created a form which declares who you are, where you're going, when you're doing it, et cetera, so you can account for it. So, Rachel would actually have something to look at and say, alright, next Tuesday, I got so-and-so's going over here. Cause she literally is finding out in real time as it's happening, and that is getting dangerous.
Yeah. How is, how is she scheduling those people? Will she have a software interface or does she have?
I think she does it via hand. I think she needs to see it and move it around. I know that's, I think that's how she does it. You certainly could do it electronically, but she literally needs to see it, the moving parts of it. Uh, but I don't know that she fully is able to have a handle on if it's the employee's decision. That just gets a little sketchy.
It's dangerous.
I would, I would say that if, if it was something that the board wanted to entertain as far as language for, um, being able to switch shifts, it would be a district office created and implemented process with oversight on our end as well, um, with input from, from Rachel. So, it wouldn't be, I mean, we've we've kind of, it would probably end up being very similar process to how we're doing certified staff and support staff. Time off requests and those types of things with approval chains and everything, um, which we've gotten pretty good at, so. But we would definitely have to help manage that.
Yeah, I, I know it's a headache, but I also, it was a, it was a valid concern, I think, and especially when you have a number of employees, it, it is one of our hardest areas to keep employees. Um, and we have a number of employees who are currently used to the way it is. It's very hard to go from something to nothing. As a, you know, I guess as a, you know, good faith effort on the, on the board's behalf, I would like to advocate that we would not go to zero, but to keep something, but with checks and balances from the, and I, I think it would, it would run more efficiently. I think it would be better for the administrative staff this way to do it, to do it this way. Uh, and if we run into problems, we can always revisit this. This is something that we would revisit every year, just like we do the certified and, uh, um, non-certified staff, support staff handbook, so.
Yeah, but if we, if we make these changes and find it's an issue, we need to revisit it sooner than a year.
Yes, always, yes, always, yeah, you can bring it up, of course.
Can you tell me, did the, are those, uh, those roles, those, those jobs those folks have, are those steady jobs in that, you know, it's the same time every day for that individual? They come in and go, or are they fluctuating week to week?
No, not usually.
Okay.
If there, if there are four, ten, Tuesdays, my day off. They literally speak that language. Tuesdays, my day off, I'm next.
Yeah, it come, I think the factor is when people are gone or have vacations or have babies, then Rachel's got to figure something out.
So, it's not scheduling in general, it's scheduling the special circumstances. Yeah, and I, I would also, I, I would just add that I, I, there might also need to be language in there that, and I don't know what that would look like right now, that this could be essentially blocked out for a period of time. Um, because we do have quite a few that are gonna be going out on maternity leave here coming up between now and the end of fall. And so, I think if, if we just, again, if we unrestricted, we're already gonna be, you know, uh, running a real tight ship there this fall with all the maternity leaves going on. And so, this might not be able to actually happen, and I think it needs to be at the discretion of the, the, the director of, you know, if and when.
Based on availability of other full-time employees. That's how I think I would look at doing that, cause we did talk about the number of people going out on maternity leave, so.
Yeah, and I look at it as another added benefit that they get. They do have paid time off right now. It's not like they don't get time off. This is allowing them to have two extra opportunities to switch without having to use it.
Yes, and I, I think that was kind of the gist of the discussion that we had the other night, is that, um, you know, they wanted, a number of four was thrown out. I personally feel that four is too many when you are afforded other paid time off opportunities. Um, and so, but I thought that two would might be a, a good compromise, um, that it would be a detrimental pit, and you you're not then gaining things that other people aren't gaining. John, can you also speak to the, the value of a day necessarily of PLT and why we're moving to this, why this is created?
Yeah, without, without going into the, the full twenty-minute, um, kind of presentation, if you will.
I have faith you can do it in three.
Yeah, essentially, um, when we were going through this process, um, a little bit before then, um, we, since the, since its inception, we have allowed staff members to work ten-hour shifts, whether that be on three ten-hour shifts or four ten-hour shifts.
That was safe, April.
Thank you.
The, by virtue of just simple clerical error or computer glitch, um, those who work ten-hour shifts have been accruing PLT in increments of ten hours. So, their day has been equivalent to ten hours versus, uh, for instance, a custodian who works five, eight-hour shifts, same forty hours worked, was only accruing eight. So, by the time you amortize that out. So by the time you amortize that out for the forty a week folks that are twelve months a year, they were, clubhouse employees were accruing a hundred and twenty hours.
Twelve times ten.
Twelve times ten. And everyone else was getting ninety-six, being eight next to twelve. Furthermore, the three ten hour, three ten hour a week individuals were getting a hundred and twenty hours of PLT, because it was the value of a day times ten hours. So they were accruing a hundred and twenty hours annually versus others who worked thirty hours in the district were only accruing seventy-two, which would be eight ti- or which would be six times twelve. And so that, that right there is no small inequity. I mean, that's a, a pretty large inequity. Uh, and the, the confusion honestly stems from the definition of what is a day? Is a day, is a day your day, what you work? Or is a day based off of averages? Uh, my contention, and I believe Shans as well, is that we have to look at what is a workday as it relates to the vast majority of employees in the school district of Amory, which would be forty hours divided by five working days would give you a value of eight. Uh, so therefore, the language that's reflected in this handbook is essentially going to, and Becky, if you want to just scroll to the, the point on their letter of appointment, um, so. Is it above it? That's below it. No.
The example.
Yeah, the example, yeah. So what, what, what we would seek to do in this would be, uh, only on their letters of appointment. Um, this is not currently on anyone else's letters of appointment, but you can see next to that little arrow tick there, one that says paid time off value. So we would take what their contracted or their letter of appointment hours would be, divide them by five, and that would be what they would accrue as far as PLT is concerned. If we do that, then regardless of whether you're four tens, three tens, you're one day working forty hours, however that would happen, regardless, you would still accrue paid time off the same as every other uh, staff member that's in your category here in the school district of Amory. I think that.
Yes, and the reason I'd ask is because the other concern is obviously people are upset that they're going to be losing hours. But they're not really losing hours, because our people that have already accrued their PLT get to keep those.
Yes.
So unfortunately, we do have, you know, we have the two types of people that everybody has. You have the type of person that keeps every PLT hour that they accrue. And then you have the people that use them faster than they can get them. So they don't have it, uh, but that's just the nature of the beast, so.
And I, I will add just a couple other quick points. Um, I was proactive in that one of the beautiful things about working for a school district is when you call other school districts, we don't view each other as being competition for kids or for staff. Uh, so there's this free flow of information that you can gather. Um, and I spoke to five different districts over the course of a week, and I could tell you that their number is ninety-six hours. That's the number. Whether they do that in days or they do that in hours, their total, whether they call it vacation, PTO, PLT, sick days, blah, blah, blah. At the end of the day, forty hour a week staff are entitled to ninety-six total hours of paid leave time of some variety, uh, throughout the course of the year. Uh, so I believe that this would make it equitable. And as a gesture of goodwill, we will be on June thirtieth, we will run a report based off of bank leave or bank leave time. And they will get credited as a day being equivalent to ten hours for rolling into next year. So in theory, if you had fifty bank PLT days, you'll have five hundred hours on the first of the year.
So, so they will be, they will be allowed to take hours instead of taking.
Correct, yes, I, I apologize. So that's essentially what the change is. District wide, everyone else will still take it off as a day. Clubhouse will be taking it off in increments of hours.
And they understand that portion.
Correct.
Um, the other big thing was shifts that now, um, everybody that would apply and get hired moving forward is no longer that option of those five and a half or ten hour shifts, it's eight hour shifts. So five eights.
Five days a week.
Five eights, that's it. But the people that are here now, that are on their ten hour schedules that they like, their four tens or their three tens, they are going to be able to keep them. So we're not moving, forcing any current employees to a new schedule. They're going to be able to keep those. So they'll be grandfathered in.
Yep.
Just so the board understands.
Until they resign.
Until they resign, because they get rehired on their back, then they're on as five eights. So even if they worked here before, they cannot come back as whatever they were prior to.
But if they stay on for twenty years, they can still.
They can stay their shift that they have.
Were, were the, was the ten hour schedule put in place for the role that was in place? Or was it put in place for the convenience of the employee?
The, the, I, I.
I think it was to cover classes.
Correct, I think so.
I think there's some of both.
Correct.
I think there's some of both.
Yeah, there was also at the time, um, I think there was a fair number of the staff that was also enrolled in school uh, in, in post-secondary education. Uh, and so they were utilizing that off day as being their school day to be in, in person. Uh, and, and again, that, that's not to say that we're trying to not encourage them to go to school. Uh, but I think there's other flexibility that can be made versus, you know, compromising that. Uh, but yeah, I would agree with John. I, I think it was to, to cover those ratios.
So, so then the follow-up was, would be if you go to eight hours for everybody, does that create another problem? In that you wouldn't have the coverage that you need?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think it does. I think Rachel's mapped that out long enough to know that it will not.
Yeah.
It's a matter of how you schedule them in, because eight hours doesn't mean eight to four.
Right.
You schedule them to overlap. So we're open six to six.
Six to twelve hour date, right?
It's a twelve hours. You can't do it just by everyone doing eight to four. Yeah, so you gotta stagger them.
And, and that was kind of the argument that was brought from the employees is that, well, if you get rid of our ten hour shifts, then we don't have that continuity, because they're seeing somebody else when they drop, you know, said child off, and then they're seeing another person when they pick up. But that's going to be the case anyway, because most people have their children here more than those eight or ten hours anyway. So it's, that's, it happens anyway.
We, we have plenty of methods available to staff to communicate with parents if need be, or if the parents want to. I mean, we've got, I, I, without listing them, I mean, you, if you really needed to communicate with those parents or they needed to communicate with you, they certainly have multiple avenues that can do that.
So that was just our job as, um, the people that were there at the listening session. Those were the, I said, what was your top things that you would like to have the board hear on their behalf? And that, those were the top three items of discussion. In fact, those were the only items of discussion. Although I think that there were people that, who came to that meeting who were unsettled, who felt much more settled after they had left, because I don't think they understood in that depth, the first couple of presentations that you gave, that they were able to just ask more questions and be more comfortable. So it sounded like, really, I mean, I think if I would have to say on behalf of the, the employees, it's just that the biggest concern of being able to trade those shifts was, um, after everything was hammered out was kind of their biggest thing that they wanted the board to address.
So no action required, first reading?
Can I just clarify? Am I hearing that on the second reading, you would like to see language under work schedules? A proposed language that allows a small amount of shift swapping?
I would advocate for to see, uh, up to two, uh, times in a year with, uh, to the discretion of the advisor. That would be my personal.
Well, that, the draft version of it is two.
Yes, yes. So that would, that would be my personal, um, opinion on that. But that's obviously for the board to weigh in, what they would like to, the rest of the board to see if they want to put that in or not.
Do you need a motion now?
No, no, I don't think so.
No, just, no, if he.
We can bring it next month and we'll still have this motion too, if you don't like it.
That's not part of it, yeah.
So we'll vote at that time and, and it's either in or out. Anything else? Anybody have any questions on? Alright, we'll move on then to Act Twenty, Fourth Grade Promotion. Jess?
Wonderful. This is the first reading, so per Act Twenty, by July first, we have to have an adopted, uh, board policy that talks about fourth grade promotion. So, um, a student who is in third grade who has not exited a personalized reading plan, uh, personalized reading plan is the acronym is PRP. So any student between grades K and three can, um, develop a PRP, which says that they are not, uh, meeting the assessment benchmarks that have been laid out by the state of Wisconsin, using Ames Web as a screener, but then also using FastBridge, which we have locally as a diagnostic assessment for them. Um, so what you have in front of you is the, is the first draft. This is very similar, um, to what many districts are rolling out. DPI has provided some guidance on it, and so this draft was developed by, by that guidance from the DPI. So I, I won't read the whole thing, but I'll, I'll definitely hit on some topics that I feel like are important within our plan. Um, so this needs to be adopted by July first. It will not go into effect until July first, or until September first of twenty twenty-seven. Um, the guidance on that is it gives us time as a district to put some big things in place. For example, um, we have to offer intensive reading instruction in the summer for a student that's on a PRP. And so that takes time. Um, so we're looking to implement this, um, in September first of twenty twenty-seven, which was recommended by the DPI, which I would say most districts around us, if not all, um, are looking for an implementation date of September first of twenty twenty-seven. Um, there's two different sections in it. So again, this is for a student who has not demonstrated, um, reading proficiency, has a, has a, has a PRP, and at the time of when they're moving on to fourth grade, has not met the criteria to exit that PRP. So I'm, I'm under section two right now. Um, so part of the processes, um, is that a student of, a team of individuals will engage in the determination process. So it's a team of us that will look at the data to make a determination of the student will be promoted or retained. Uh, representatives from the school will consider all available data demonstrating the student's response to reading instruction and interventions. And so that will come from FastBridge and Ames Web Plus, and then also the Wisconsin Forward Exam. And on the back of the first page, um, representatives from our school will, will determine whether the student is eligible for a good cause exemption. I'll share those in just a moment. Um, if the student has an INP in the area of reading or is an English learner with a language acquisition plan, the school representatives will review the student's progress towards those goals and communicate that to the parent or guardian. Um, representatives from the school will communicate long-term risks of retention. There's a wide body of research out there that, that demonstrates that holding a student back or retaining a student has significant impacts socially, emotionally, and even academically. And so the bullet points that you see underneath that, um, are actually research-based. The DPI has shared those out, so those are, are pulled from the DPI's recommendations of, these are the long-term effects of retaining the student. Those would be shared with parents as we go into this conversation to let them know just the effects that could happen. Um, representatives from the school will consider alternatives to retention. The school will not deny any student advancement to fourth grade based solely on the student's performance in reading in the third grade state summative assessment or universal screener. The school district will not deny any language learner, English language advancement to fourth grade solely based on language proficiency. The team may conclude that promotion is in the best interest of a student, even if the team also concludes based on clear communication that the student was unable to complete their PRP due to a student's lack of reading proficiency. And then the final bullet point is, um, we will then make a recommendation of promotion or retention for that student. Um, on the final page, you will see, based on the holistic evaluation, the entire team will make one of the following choices then. Based on the current meeting, we share all this research with them. We will either make the promotion to fourth grade, um, with applicable services and supports. Um, the student's non-completion of the student's PRP was not primarily due to the student's lack of reading and the student isn't promoted. Their parents or guardians and school reps agree that the retention is more appropriate than promotion to fourth grade. And the student's reparents will give written consent for that retention. And then the fourth is, the school representatives recommend retention, but the student's parents or guardian does not consent to retention. Regardless of any other facts, circumstances, or analysis, the student is then promoted to fourth grade. So these are our, our guidance for promoting the student or retaining a student. Um, and then section three just describes the post-promotion mandates and exceptions. And so with that, we're saying that we will provide intensive instructional services, progress monitoring and supports to remediate, which we currently do and have continued to do. Um, we will notify the parents or guardians in writing that the student did not complete a PRP and will include a description of the intense instructional services that support. So that will be happening at the end of the year this year. So our students that have not exited a PRP, we will be communicating that home with parents. We will be sending a letter to say your student did not complete their PRP. They didn't exit out of it, uh, but they will be moving on to fourth grade. And then on the very back page are some good cause exemptions. And so again, that's limited English proficient, a student that has an INP, um, a student that scores proficient in the dynamic learning maps or another standardized assessment, a student has a five oh four, or the student has received intense interventions in reading for two or more school years and continues to demonstrate that deficiency. So this is, we're presenting you as our first reading of our district's fourth grade promotion policy.
So I have two questions. What's the reason for the delay from twenty-five to twenty-seven? Is it because you're trying to build a database?
What it does is it allows us as a district to build all these commitments. So one of the big commitments is that we have to offer intense summer school instruction. And so, you know, we have wonderful summer school teachers right now that teach academics. But what we're saying is starting next summer is that anyone who teaches reading instruction to any of these students, and this is, this is going to be a challenge for us to build this, I've already talked to Mrs. Shogren as well, is that any teacher who teaches reading in the summer to a student that has a PRP must be taught by a teacher that is highly trained in the science of reading, which all of our teachers K through three are, several in fourth and several in fifth are. Many of our summer school teachers are not. They may not be our teachers. They might be retired teachers who are not trained in the science of reading. So this allows us time as a district, uh, to build that capacity. So when summer school comes, the following summer, is that all of our teachers are highly trained in the science of reading program. We've chosen top ten tools and that's what we've continued to go with. Um, so this allows us the time to build that robust.
It's purely about implementation. There are districts that are swimming that do not have the title services or a director of curriculum instruction like Mrs. T. Ambrocio. There are districts that are truly swimming to try and keep up with this. We're in good shape, but we're in good shape as the staff do.
Well, and then the, the next question is, how many kids, I know it's a loaded question, but how many kids fall into a category now where we would be looking at recommendations to hold them?
It's not all kids. It's, it's K, what, K three, correct?
Yeah, yeah, K three, but.
Between K and three, you've got approximately four hundred kids. There's a lot of kids. What was the number we had approximately?
I can pull it up while we're talking and I can share it with you, Steve. I would say in third grade now, third grade right now, we're looking at about thirty-seven kids that have not exited their PRP.
You're looking at between a third and a half of nearly every class.
And it's significant in kindergarten and first grade, because there are screeners that they're using. Um, there, there are a lot, and, and these kids are just learning. And we're screening them three times a year, multiple measures. We screen with FastBridge, we screen them with Ames Web.
So we screen in the winter, we screened again here this spring. And the really good news to report is the number of kids that we had fall off and no longer need a PRP. About a quarter of our kids moved out of that category because of the instruction that we provide. Because there's a lot of gains that are happening in the elementary and intermediate tiers over the course of a year, particularly between some, or January, and when we did the most recent screening here in April. That's, that's a big game time.
And the reason why is third grade, research has shown that by third grade, you really need to hit them with reading interventions. Really, when you're, when you're providing reading interventions for fifth, sixth, seventh grade, it's not that it's not important, but early intervention is best, uh, which has always been what we've done here and really have focused on. So we really are growing our learners. Having, you know, approximately thirty-five, thirty-seven students in third grade here with their personalized reading plan, we would not seek to retain any of them this year. But moving forward, we're going to have to have this in place for any student that doesn't exit. And we're going to have to sit down and we're going to have to have conversations with parents and we're going to have to make a recommendation.
So do you, do you think that there's value in the program as it was presented? Or do you think that the legislation was designed in a way to promote failure?
There's a loaded question.
And I'm, I love curriculum instruction and I love data. And so when I look at Act Twenty, there's, you know, this is me personally speaking. I think there's a lot of value in what it's asking schools to do, that maybe weren't set up, that we're already doing it.
I think it was heavy-handed in its language, but our approach has been, well, if we're going to have to do this, then we're just going to do it really well. So what it's done is it's really pinned us down in regards to the identification of kids. We don't have just one or two data points. Now we got five and six. We really know who those kids are and we're really targeting them and we're. We really know who those kids are, and we're really targeting them and we're moving them forward. But we already were. This is really legislation for school districts that didn't have progress monitoring. We've been doing progress monitoring here for 30 years.
And we progress monitor our kids every year, so to say. Has just grown it all.
There are districts that aren't doing any of this on campus.
So my point is there's a bad.
To us, there's value.
There is.
It's a lot of work. I mean, this has consumed my life for quite some time, as well as our Title I team. But I will say I feel very good about the work that we're doing. And I think if anything, it's just strengthening us as a district when it comes to literacy, I really do.
And our instructors and our title team are fantastic. So we are in really good shape in implementing this mandate. And again, some districts are swimming. See, we don't even have a title team. We've got four All-Star title teachers. So we're in very good shape. And a director of curriculum instruction, because that doesn't happen elsewhere as well. This policy, the policy that Jessica's authored, this might be the most significant policy this board and this district's seen in 30 years. This is a game changer policy. This asks us to do a ton. And that's okay, because we already were. Now it's just formalized, and this is a monster policy. It is, and I think Jessica, if we're taking the time to do it, is this really significant what's there. But again, it's sort of doubling down, tripling down on what we've already been doing.
So next spring, when, if we have students that haven't exited their PRPs, I, you know, it will require myself and a team to sit down with every single one of these families to describe to them, right, where their growth is, how their progress monitoring, where's the gaps, and then make a commitment to them, how to move forward. So for me, that's just cultivating the relationship even more with parents to say, look, look what we're all doing for your kid, right? That we greatly care about your kid. Let's talk about what's best for them. And I think it puts us in a good spot, just in terms of fostering relationships with kids and getting them to grow, right? Reading is the key to everything in life.
I do want to point out that especially the last part of this policy really hits that it does put the choice squarely back into the parent's hands. I mean, this really is very much parental consent-driven when brass tacks comes down to it. So either they can choose to move their child forward because of those things, like you said, that would be harmful if holding our students back. My question is, if we have to have children here over the summer being intensely educated, what do we think that looks like as far as parental consent for kids to come to school? And then what is our obligation as far as transportation? And how does that work with kids that are on IEPs and things like that? Maybe that's more for what those are.
There is no teeth in that. We can ask it, we can hope for it, we cannot require it. If a parent says, nope, summer's off, summer's off.
So we have to offer it, right? We have to offer it. And so part of that offering is that the people who are doing the teaching, the educators that are doing the teaching, have to be highly trained in it. And there has to be a seat open for that kid. We can't turn down a kid and say we're at capacity. When it comes to academic reading, it is, we'll make a seat for you, and we'll make sure that we have a really strong educator that has had this training. So, you know, I'm already looking towards next summer, and what does that look like for us? Because it's a lot in that, that offering is to all of our K three students is, you know, intense reading intervention throughout the summer.
In that aspect, the heavy-handedness of this doesn't fit the dynamic of what we face in public education. Because they don't understand, not everyone's eagerly anticipating and wanting to put their kid in summer school for intensive reading instruction.
It was honestly the first thing that I.
They're not there. Why would we do that? They'll get it when they come back to school in September, to their disposition, which they will. But this requires us to offer it, so we'll offer it.
And just to highlight how ahead we are as a district, is two years ago, we adopted our actual reading curriculum. I worked with Laura and just researched different reading curriculums that were out there as just specific summer programs, right? We have HMH into reading, which we love and has given us great gains. But what could we offer kids so that when they came, there was something prescriptive? That as if I'm sending a kindergartner, I want to know what is the scope and sequence that my kindergartner is learning, that they're learning the skills that they were learning. And so this is year three for us going into a program called the 95% phonics. So we, as a school district, you know, we're offering reading, but we're offering, using a really high-quality resource that is backed by the science of reading. So we're already giving our kids, you know, five weeks of intense reading intervention. How Act 20 lays that out for us, we might have to pivot a little bit. But we're already doing it, right? This is year three for us of offering something that's really high-quality at this point.
So I just have one question. I want to make sure I'm clear in this. Every student K three has a personal reading plan.
Only if they score below, at or below the 25th percentile in AIMS Web.
And all were screened.
Every kid.
All were screened. All the 25th, then they go PRP.
So I will say our Title I team, I'm going to give them all that credit. Is we screened all of our K three students. Any student that was under the 25th percentile, which was over about 100 kids, had a PRP written for them, individualized with progress monitoring. So that means every week, a teacher is sitting down with a computer and seeing what have they learned this week. So that was happening every week. We communicated with parents multiple times throughout the year. But each plan was written exactly for that individual kid, whether they had a 504 or an IEP. I mean, they really went above and beyond enrolled.
So a student could not be on it as a kindergartner, but could go on it as a first grader.
Correct, and could exit it and then come back on.
How do you, how do you exit the PRP? Is it by just completing the requirements set forth in the PRP? Is it through testing? Is it a combination of all of those things?
So another thing I'm working on is our Early At Literacy Remediation Plan. And that is not a Ford Pass policy, but it is a school plan that we have created for both buildings. I'm going to bring that to you next month. That has, I think it's seven subsections that I've worked on. And within that, we have exit criteria. So how does a student get off of a PRP?
25th percentile of what population? State population, our local population?
National.
International.
And then what, because of having these intensely trained teachers for summer school, which would be above and beyond our regular, what does that look like as far as the financial impact to the district? Are we going to have to pay more?
I don't know yet. We've already had to pay more for Act 20. Not a staggering amount, probably about $25,000 total. And then, of course, with screeners and everything. So far, Jess, Tom, and I have done one kind of subsidy claim for $3,000, and it was aggressive, to say the least. I have heard whispers that the state is going to try to weasel that in somewhere into the state budget as well. Whether they do or not is anybody's guess. But, you know, we do know that we've got, how many educators is year three that we have to put through top 10 tools as an immediate, as an immediate requirement for staying within Act 20 compliance, which is $1,500? So that, you know, it's, yeah. So has it altered the school district's budget in a massive way? No. Could it? It certainly could, but we don't know yet.
And the summer school has to be offered free of charge to the parents.
But it is at present on奉the mandate.
It is.
That is absolutely true.
That is very accurate.
We just have to make sure that we get the right teachers in there.
I envision investing in our educators. We, as a district, have invested in them and paid for their science of reading training. And so how great would it be to have our teachers, our own, our own teachers that we coached and invested in, that they're the ones teaching the summer school, right? They're our experts.
Do we have willingness from our own staff to give up their summers to do this?
We haven't broached that subject yet.
Because it's a huge commitment.
It is a commitment. You're absolutely right.
I would also hope that at some point, you know, we could be, the district would be paying more for training the trainers than having to submit every individual person through. You know, it'd be great to be able to have someone in-house that's not just teaching top 10 tools or whatever the case.
I don't know about giving that up.
They earn, can they earn PDH hours for that? For being our in-house training?
Professional development, that's exactly what it is.
Yes.
Top 10 tools required 45 hours of training for each of these teachers, and they were compensated with PDHs.
Do we want to correct the confusion between those?
Stages.
It won't be secret, those are nice words.
So there's no action required at this time. It's a first reading of a very important policy. We will bring it back to here next month.
It's a very comprehensive policy. Obviously, questions, but well-written and anything else other than questions moving forward with this? Thanks for presenting that tonight, Jess.
You're welcome.
All right, off to action items. And there was, on the agenda was the liability insurance renewal with Julie Holmes. Jim was not able to be here this evening.
We haven't gotten our, we have not gotten our bits back yet.
Okay, so that is, will not be an action item tonight. We don't have to table that or anything. We're just going to modify that on the agenda, that we'll be skipping over that tonight. Obviously, there's just not enough information there. So Skyward, cumulative finance and HR software proposal. John, you're up.
So I'll be as brief as humanly possible with this. Essentially, the largest software that we live in, there's two softwares that we live in daily. The educators and educational admin live in Power School, and then the business office lives in a program called Skyward. We've been a customer of Skyward since 1994, and they've gone through two iterations before what you see in front of you right now, which is called Cumulative. So right now, we are actually using two separate softwares, more or less, that communicate with each other to get the daily business office needs taken care of. So Gretchen lives in a thing called PAC, where the rest of us live in something called WEB. So the first page that's in front of you right here is to bring it all back into one big, beautiful picture, which is called Cumulative. So if you scroll down just a little bit, Becky, what you see with Cumulative is on the left-hand side, you have fiscal year 2026. If we were to continue as we did in the previous year versus what it would cost to switch to their new software. So as you can see, the annual cost to the district is exactly the same. It's built differently because it's not all these individual modules. It's all under one umbrella, but the annual cost is the same. The biggest thing is that the migration fees are to the tune of $8,000. So that includes training. You have to think for just a second, we're going to be merging 10 years worth of budgetary information in a process that takes approximately 12 months to complete. So with your approval, this wouldn't actually be anything that we would even see turned on until April 13th of next year. So that's how long it takes. There's kind of two big facets for why I'm pushing for this now. Number one, we have to. They are no longer going to support PAC at some point. And right now, and Lonnie can attest to this, PAC is a server on someone else's server at a different place that we don't have control over, have access to, and we have a restricted amount of logins that we can do. So for instance, Gretchen logs in on that under me through IS Corp. So there's a little bit of a safety concern potentially. But, you know, the other portion of it is there are modules within Cumulative that we could be using to have a much better and slicker just kind of operation, if that makes sense. So I'm asking for your approval to allow us to spend the additional $8,000 this year in order to kind of kick this process off and make Aaron Osro's life a lot more complicated in the next 12 months.
You should be pumped for that right off the bat, then.
No, actually, the good part about doing these, and again, I think if you talk to software or data people, one of the really good things is the first step in transitioning to new software is cleaning up your data. And boy, do we have a lot of data in there that just needs to be cleaned up. And it's, it might seem very innocuous to some. But since 1994, we've had how many district administrators versus business office? So we've got Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction listed as a vendor as WYDPI. We have it as DPI. We have it as DPIWI. We have it as. So even just that one, one small little bracket, cleaning up data just makes life easier. And it ultimately, kind of on the far back end of it, also leads to greater transparency because people know what the hell we're talking about.
And it will not drive our auditors nuts.
Correct.
Because every year, our auditors complain.
So that's kind of the first portion of this. The second page, and this is just a, I just wanted to bring this up for the first time since we're talking about the other side. As I mentioned before, we use Power School and we use Skyward. Power School had a pre-significant data breach here back in December, where they were actually the victim of ransomware that they paid. And so our impact from a local level was relatively small in that we had fewer than 150 compromised individuals, meaning that we had social security numbers, that sort of thing that was in there. And, but the impact in St. Croix Falls was much bigger. So they had thousands of student and staff social security numbers in there to a point where they have filed suit against Power School. So in conversations with Sean and in kind of what we're seeing with Power School as a student information system, there is some pretty real concern that they're not going to be able to financially pull through and out of the hole that they've kind of gotten themselves into, which if we had to make an immediate change in student information systems, can't do it. This process right here would be at least 16 months. And that's just because there is an insane amount of data with student enrollments, et cetera. So when we're looking just kind of future, and I will present on this likely in July, the big thing is, I think there is some missed opportunities as well. I think Skyward is a much better and a more robust student information system. I think from what I've understood from going to conferences, parents are much happier with communication avenues that they have, with parent portal information. Administration, administrators seem to like the data portion of this. In reality, the annual cost of this would actually be saving the district $12,000 a year. Power School costs about $28,000. And if you just kind of look at the average for switching, it's about $16,000 a year through Skyward. And then it's one system. So our entire district, our staff, our teachers, everyone is using one system, one login, which would make Lonnie's life a lot easier. It's more or less one database that we're trying to maintain for compliance reasons. We would be saving money on the annual, but if you see that big bottom line under services, it will cost $56,900 in order to actually implement that. The vast majority of that cost is on backend training for teachers, administrators, et cetera. I have gotten them to agree to splitting that out over the course of the first three fiscal years. So it would look like a three-year term deal. And that $56,000 could be split out over the course of those three years just to make cash flow a little bit better. But again, this is just something I just kind of wanted to bring up while we were starting this discussion. So for today, and the reason why it's an action item is for the HR and finance side. The student information side will not happen without a full in-depth kind of presentation to you guys.
Well, I'm all for this, however, I do have questions for you and Lonnie.
Please.
These are both hosted elsewhere, right? No servers here.
Correct.
And if you've got concerns over Power School not being around, and you're saying it's 16 months, then we're already behind. And should we be waiting? And I recognize it's a big undertaking, no matter what you do, one system versus the other. But are we focusing on the right system first?
So I think we've had internal discussions that Power School will at least make another year. And that's more or less because legally they have to, because everyone's signed. So if they can't make it another year, well, then, you know, there are going to be even more of a world of hurt because the litigation that's going to come out of that would be absolutely insane. The, what we've been told is we can condense it as much as fast as we want, and they could have it up and ready in as short as five. And they could have it up and ready in as short as five to seven months for a go-live date. The bigger issue is that would put a go-live date smack dab in the middle of the school year where we would have to teach other, we would have to teach parents, teachers, Sean, I mean, you name it. We would have to teach on how to use it. And because of all of the various portals and different modules that are a part of it, it is a lot to learn. I think everyone will embrace it. I really do. I know it's a daunting task, but you know, I think it can be done. So I, I would say for an expediency standpoint, I'm not super concerned about that because I think we could be able to get that to be a go-live if need be for school year 26, 27.
If they do shut the doors, Lonnie, do we get the data?
Yes.
We can still get the data.
Yes.
Okay, and then I can't speak to a lot of detail, but for the other board members, I will just tell you when my wife is coming back from some conferences, we are one of very few schools using Power School. Almost everybody else is on Skyward.
And I, I'll do one pitch and one little plug here. Skyward is a Wisconsin company, so they're based out of Stevens Point. And all of their, and it's very clear that when they do new things and different modules, they're doing it based off of the state of Wisconsin and how we educate kids in the state of Wisconsin. And so it's even to the point where they're coded in Woofr, which is the language that only Wisconsin school districts speak, is, is, it's, it's really great. So I, I, I like it. There was actually several years ago, there was a push at the state level to standardize the softwares that all school districts use and they had chose Skyward until they realized that they constitutionally can't mandate softwares, but regardless, so.
The 56.9 for the implementation that you negotiated, the three-year, three fiscal year split. Is there any fees or interest accrued with that three?
There is not. That's a good question. There is not.
So we're still just paying 56.9, we're just doing it over three years?
Correct.
I mean, dumb not to.
But that's, but that's not what we're actioning on.
Not tonight. Nope. Tonight, tonight what we are actioning on is the $8,014 for moving us forward with cumulative finance.
Correct.
Do you think that, just, just knowing that my wife is one of those that's involved in what you're talking about doing, do you think that whoever's in that role can get through whatever you need to get through here before you move to the student information side of it?
I think you can, you, you could do both at the same time if need be. We already, the first step in doing this is going through this diagnostic exercise for downloading and going through and sifting through the data that's going to be transmitted and, and gone through. And we're already a pretty good chunk of the way through that list already. There's just a couple of different data sets that we've never used that we need to, to do. So I think they can be done in conjunction with each other. I would estimate that by the end of this summer, we will be done more or less with our portion of the uploading of data to them. And it'll be more into the onesie, twosie, everything. So if need be, we could also be merging student information at the same time. It just might take a little bit, you know, another person if you.
I would make a motion that we move forward with what was presented on page one of the Skyward documentation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to move forward with Skyward cumulative finance and HR software proposals presented tonight by John. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of moving forward with the proposal, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. We'll move ahead. John, go ahead and spend $8,000.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, elementary. Lonnie, you've been here a long time. Thanks for your patience. Your, your elementary, high school, uh, display screen purchases.
Correct.
Expensive more money.
Yes, and it's actually, originally we had, uh, budgeted for two other iterations of spending as well on that. We've decided not to go forward with those two due to our devices being sufficient to get us to release the next year.
God bless you.
Okay, so that's intermediate and elementary school Chromebooks should not have an issue getting us through the next year. Staff laptops should also not have any issues getting us through the year. So currently, the only thing I'm looking at purchasing this year would be the Ben Q R E04s, displays for the classrooms, in addition to four e-signage displays for the commons of the high school.
And the notion of it being elementary, high school is we already did mental and intermediate and we avoided the elementary and high school based on referendum work. We didn't want to do the screenings with all that crazy that was going on, so we just delayed it. Sorry I interrupted.
All right. Currently, the 75-inch boards are going at $2,800 per unit. An order in 66, 86 inches, these will be done in the media centers at both buildings, intermediate and elementary school. A total of two per building, per total of four at 3749. Carts for the larger one, the 86 inches, we're getting electronic adjustable carts. That way they can be moved throughout the building wherever they're needed, including the cafeterias, the gyms, or anywhere there's any event going on in those buildings. And then for the high school, we're looking to get four 65-inch electronic signage. And these are for purposes of putting announcements, lunch menus, events, displaying any information during events. We could possibly do the streaming right there on the board during the game that's being played. So if we have the wrestling event next year, we'll be able to, they'll be able to sit in the commons and watch that on these boards. Right now, we're looking at a total of $211,252. And we're looking at a three-year lease, or a five-year lease. I'm sure we'll go with the three-year lease at 75, 317 for three years. And these do include a five-year warranty, so after we're done paying, we'll still have at least two additional years of use on our reports.
And, and just for, for quick math's sake, the three-year lease terms, you know, would be a total payment of $225,000, which would be plus or minus about $14,000. If we go the five-year lot lease route, it's about $31,000 in interest. So it is quite a significant interest savings. And I'll just add a couple of different points. The, like Lonnie said, we, we've decided not to move forward with staff or student devices for this year, which is about $93,000 a year. So it is a pretty significant savings on the '25, '26 fiscal budget. We are kind of looking for a more expedient answer than maybe we wouldn't. And that's simply because we were informed on our meeting with Ben Q that there is going to be tariff-related increases of at least 15%, I believe is what he said.
Correct.
So there is a little bit of a sense of urgency with getting this order placed. Now, it won't happen until July 1st that we actually pay and get them. But we've been doing business with Vantage Financial for a long time. They've always done the district really well. My recommendation is just based off of the savings that we would go with the three-year lease terms with the $1 buyout. So essentially, at the end of the three years, we pay a dollar per device that's on that lease and they're ours to use. And that way, we're not, we're not hanging on to any, any leases that we don't need to for an additional time period.
Is the price locked in, even if we don't order, if we don't have to pay or order until?
So the price is locked in until tomorrow. So yeah, so if, if.
Even if we don't pay until July, the price is locked in to tomorrow.
Till tomorrow.
Till tomorrow. That's, that's good timing, John.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's about as, that's.
Closest we can get.
That's as close as, yeah, yeah. So Lonnie kind of had to work his magic there on that one. So yes.
To budget.
Correct. Yeah, in fact, it's, it's quite a bit less than what's actually budgeted as of right now, so. And just to put it in a little bit more context, you know, his biggest budget line item, which is other general administration, is budgeted usually at about a half a million dollars a year. This year, fiscal year to date so far, we're at less than 200. We still have some bigger things that'll come through between now and June 30th, but he's been doing a pretty good job of managing that budget. I didn't want to tell you that because that usually means.
Now he's sweating. Now he's like, oh gosh, oh god, hope for life. Good job.
Yeah, we had all these same discussions in the technology meetings. It's exactly the same information I've seen at other meetings. And so with that, I'd make the recommendation we move forward with the purchase of the Ben Q models that you've brought forth and the three-year terms as well.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to move forward with the elementary and high school display screen purchases. Summer device purchase proposal as presented by Lonnie. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor of moving ahead with the display screens purchases, please signify by saying aye. Aye. And all of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Go forth. Spend your money wisely. Tomorrow, get it done tomorrow.
Tomorrow. The email.
Don't be sick tomorrow.
Yeah, the email is sent from tonight.
Okay.
I'll be working from home. I maxed it out tomorrow, so.
Are you going to strass me out? Thanks, Lonnie. All right, moving on to the approval of the '25, '26 open enrollment applications.
Okay, what you see on your sheet or up on the screen, a green column and a red column. The green is applying to open enroll into the school district of Amory for '25, '26 school year. You see where they're coming from. Resident district means where they're coming from. And you also see the grade as in who they are, as in which grade they're in. And the red column, you'll see again what grade they're in. But this is a kid that lives in Amory that's going elsewhere. And you don't have to declare one location. You can open enroll and choose to go five, six, seven, 10 different places. You simply got to list them all down.
It's only three.
Three, sorry, my bad. Three, okay. You can declare the intent to go elsewhere and these folks are declaring that intent by my column. It was 29, yes, 29 listed. And the number one destination is New Richmond. What we have found in seeking to discover why people are leaving the school district of Amory, most of these folks live towards Star Prairie and for workplace convenience, they're heading towards that direction and they're going right through this school district of Amory. So rather than backtrack to here, they're dropping into Richmond in the morning and they're picking up on the way back home, which makes sense from a logistical standpoint. So you would need to make a motion to allow these folks to, to arrive and to depart, so to speak.
I would make a motion if we accept the open enrollment documentation and numbers as presented.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to accept the open enrollment in and out for the '25, '26 school year. Is there any further discussion? It's unfortunate that we're upside down again this year. It's not by much, but it's unfortunate. I would like to, hopefully we can close that gap and, and keep kids here. So understand that work is a huge, huge concern for people and is there, there's Metford here. Is there, is that a virtual?
Virtual.
Virtual, okay. All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving open enrollment in and out of the school district of Amory, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Open enrollment is granted. Next.
Actually, I do have a question. It doesn't affect the vote, but when, when open enrollments happen mid-year, how can we avoid them?
There are two different windows. This is the traditional window and then there's the alternative window. The alternative window happens all of the time. The traditional window, I think, is February, March, April, something like that. And then the alternative is all the rest of the months.
You would get a decision too quickly. I think it's not really practical.
The answer is because of Wisconsin.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know that I have seen, uh, open enrollment application other than for space limitations be denied and if it be upheld. I mean, if you declare an intent to go, you will always have that opportunity. This is very much a school choice state and I don't see that changing. So they will let you move about both directions, people coming here and people leaving here.
There is, maybe I'm wrong about that. Maybe that's changed now, but we can't open enroll out though more than a certain percentage of our total enrollment though, right? We can't lose, like, is it 10, is it 10%? Am I right about that?
I don't know the clause of that, so.
I, I thought we couldn't approve any more than a certain percentage of our out.
We've never opened enroll in the non-traditional window, the alternative window is. I don't know that we've ever opened enroll more in, but we've never opened enroll more out either. It's just a lot more movement now. And virtual school is part of that puzzle certainly.
All right, off to donations to the district.
We have donations to the district from Cardinal Glass. Thank you for the new mirror for the boys locker room. And the North Lakes Community Clinic Dental Outreach Program gave staff cookies. Not sure if it was an Ontario motive there.
Yeah.
We would make, make, need to make a motion to accept those two donations.
I move to accept the donations from Cardinal Glass and North Lakes Community Clinic.
Is there a second?
I'll second now.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept the donations from Cardinal Glass and North Lakes Community Clinic as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of accepting the donations as presented, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. The donations are accepted with many thanks. Thank you. It's, every month, we've always got something. The mirror of the boys locker room. That was.
With all the flexing they were doing.
All right, and then personnel action.
Reassignment of Christine Shogren moving from kindergarten to first grade. Resignations for William Kane, regular ed para, Eden Hosey, special ed para, and Ashley Long, special ed teacher at the elementary school.
Do I have a motion to accept the personnel action as presented?
Can I just clarify? I gave confirm with Abby Daywill is actually a special education parent, so regular head. So William Kane, special education para educator.
Okay, can you fill some special ed roles real quick?
You can check on your director more often.
It'll be fine. It'll be fine. Yeah, yeah. What is that with a director all of a sudden? A new director? Everybody's.
No, not really. Not really.
All off to school.
All off to school.
Yes, yes. Continuing education is a great thing to do.
I think, well, should we accept the personnel changes with the change you brought up?
Sounds great. Is there a second?
Second.
Gwen, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept the personnel action items with the change you've been presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no.
Are you going to speak?
Yeah, she will sign up for some community comments. I'm just back here in the cheap seats all by myself.
Personnel action has been approved. All right, no community comments. There's, there's nobody here except for poor Tracy and she would like to go home. And we do need to re-adjourn back into closed session for considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction to exercise responsibility in order to take personnel action pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851C. I will take a roll call vote. All of those for the numbers that are in favor. So is there a second for adjourning back into closed session? Second. Gwen, it's been properly moved and seconded to go into closed session per Wisconsin statute 19.851C. When I call your name, please vote with either yes or no. Larry?
Yes.
Gwen?
Yes.
Shar?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
All of in favor of reconvening into closed session for personnel action? So we are in closed session. Thank you.